That was good, too.
Can we unmute the commissioners? Okay, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Wednesday, January 22nd, 2025. It's 9:07 a.m. My name is Ty Manzer, Chair of the Board. My left Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Rachel Grant, Commissioner Emily Claus, Commissioner Caroline McKee, and just things virtually, County Manager Leonard Hernandez, and Assistant County Manager Josh Cummings. We have public virtual attendance on our YouTube channel. We're here as long as it takes this morning to cover a couple of items. And first up is Risk Fund Claims Cost.
Thank you so much, Chair. In response to some questions that commissioners had, the team, Risk Finance and Budget Team, and HR, put together an overview, which is included on the risk fund. I want to thank them for the work and kind of walking through. I believe that the document is pretty self-explanatory. They did a good job putting it together and laying it out, and they answered some of the questions that were specifically asked. So Chair, we stand ready to answer any questions that the commissioners may have on the information provided.
Okay, we have this one-page kind of summary attached to our packet regarding our RUCS risk fund, what it covers, where the funding comes from, and then there's a chart with sort of a summary of claims for the last three years. And that fund looks like it's been pretty inconsistent in terms of the balance. I guess I'll just start off with a question. In terms of, like, in order to keep the fund kind of consistent, I mean, like, if there was a heavy year of, like, extraordinary claims, then would just rates go up accordingly to sort of, like, even it back out? Or is it just projected over a... And there's some things that are on a lag. Robin was always good at explaining the different funds and how they're, when it came to rates. How does this one get calibrated, so to speak? Like, if there's a heavy claims, I mean, because I'm seeing, okay, 4.3, 4.3, 4.5. Is that just because the claims were identical every year, or because there's a calibration of keeping that fund kind of at that level?
Sure, I'll take that. These are actuarially determined fund balances, looking back at a five-year history of our claim payments, anticipated claim estimates for the following years, and looking at our reserves currently. So it is pretty solid that we keep it at a pretty consistent rate. We usually don't, we haven't gone over our fund balance. So we try to keep it at about a 90% confidence rate as far as a fund, based on what we think we will pay out from current claims, claims that have a long tail, maybe from a couple of years that are still ongoing and open. Does that answer your question?
I mean, kind of, but like, like, let's say, I'm looking at the chart, 2022 looks like low compared to 23 and 24 in terms of claims. So low amount of claims in 22, but the fund balances is basically the same. And then...
Because there's other charges, Chair, that are associated that hit that fund. And to Brian's point, when they're looking at a five-year claims history, they are deriving the rates that departments pay. So in concept, if our claims keep going up, that five-year goes up, the internal rate that is charged will edge up, edge up, edge up. If there's something catastrophic that hits, like a big, a big deal, well, that could require the county not only to zero out the balance, but then come and ask for additional funding from other locations, from another source. That would get averaged into the five-year claim, and that could raise rates significantly as well. But the reverse is true. If claims go down, then there's ability in the five-year average for it to...
So four and a half million is kind of like what we just budget as, kind of a buffer, so to speak, and then we calibrate it? I mean, is that, that's kind of the target of that?
Yeah, the four and a half million isn't actually our total budget. It's really our fund balance that we have to, based on our WAC. Statutorily, we have to keep that in a reserve because we are quasi-self-insured.
And I think what I'll add is if we get a big hit, like a $7 million loss, that's where the risk pool, then they kick in above our deductible. And so that's why we tend to be more static, because anything above that 250, then our insurance coverage kicks in.
Up to what point, though?
Up to $7 million. I mean, um...
So when we always, when we always hear about Maytown, $14 million, whatever, what did the county pay?
Maytown was in 20... We paid 250.
Okay, so all that time, we were told it was, you know...
Well, that goes into...
You know how insurance works. That doesn't mean that, yeah, the county didn't write a $17 million check, but the county, like, it affects everyone.
Right, our rates will go up.
When those things happen.
Yeah.
You know, like, you, you burn your house down, or whatever, and get a, get a claim check, your insurance rate is going to go up in subsequent years, and everybody... We've had many, we've had hundreds of discussions where the implication was, we wrote a 17, or a $14 million check.
You could say it that way, but that might not be exactly...
I also want to remind the board that we had a $1.9 million increase not a couple of years ago, and it was based on past claims. So every time we get a hit like that, it's, it does add up.
Yeah, every budget season, it goes, oh, insurance rates are going up, and we can't afford it. It's because of us and other... So this four and a half, now that's like the low watermark that this fund has to stay at, and then is that kind of the...
You're right.
And, and that's set by statute. And then the amount of claims that we pay out on will decrease that over the year, and then the ratepayers, the individual departments, are, they're charged based on how much is needed to replenish that?
Correct.
Okay, so if we have a big claim year, and we're putting out, and maybe we only put out 250,000 each time, but each time, you know, you put out, you know, four of those, that does cost every single department in the county more money.
It does, and each department will be charged based on severity and frequency of their history as well. So everyone is experience rated, just like you were saying with your house or your car insurance. If you wreck your car five times in a year, your rates are going to go up. If we have five $250,000 claims, we will be cut at 250, but the pool will be paying the rest of it. So the entire pool gets hit with higher claim costs, higher premiums.
Not the risk pool you're talking about?
Well, the, the pool rates will go up from premiums from our excess carriers and insurers. Therefore, our experience within the pool will pay a bigger chunk of the premiums as opposed to another county than our pool, because we had a, a large catastrophic year.
And every year, we, we present the new rates to you. So in about June, we'll be presenting what is likely going to be an increase, because it increases every year.
So our external rates will go up, but then also the internal rates go up to replenish this risk fund balance?
Yeah, I have, yeah, I have a couple, I have a couple questions. So, um, so I'm just going to ask them kind of, like, in a row. So, so the beginning risk fund balance that we see here, 22 through 24, is set by actuaries, and were set by our rates, correct? So this is just what we're required to keep as a balance at the bottom, right? Okay. And then below it here, we have what we act, what the claims were per year that we, that we saw, correct? Do we have another number that is the actuals of what we actually paid out?
These are the actual checks written, cut. These are the claim payments that we paid out. This does not include what the pool paid over and above.
Yeah, so, well, because I, because I guess what I'm trying to understand is, we're at a $250 deductible, like, when we, so I, I get exactly how kind of this works, right? But that we pay, like, if we get a claim, you know, a million-dollar claim, we cut a check for $250,000. We don't cut a check for 250, 67, 962, like, you know, that number that's right there. And so that's what I was wondering, is that, is there another set of numbers that show us what we actually spent out of each of these funds by year that actually shows kind of the impact on the bottom line of the county?
Yeah, we can, we can get that information for you, because it's going to be what we pay plus what the risk pool has put in. And so, yeah, there will be a different number.
Right, okay, yeah, because this is just what actually happened. And then, how often...
This, this number is what we paid out. This isn't, this isn't what the claim was.
That's what we just said. So it's...
Can you clarify that?
No, no, I heard, I heard the exact opposite.
What she's asking for is, what's, so in addition to this number, what, what we paid the 250, what has the risk pool put in? So, because our limit is the 250, is that what you're asking?
No, 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 no. I'm asking, I'm asking what, like, I would like to know what, what we actually paid. So when I think, when I'm just thinking about expenditures, and when, when we cut a check, it goes into our books as an expenditure. And I'm wondering what those are.
What I heard is that, that's what these numbers are.
And so that's what these numbers are?
So while we have a $250,000 deductible, there are ones where we paid more out of the risk fund.
So $372,000, we cut a check out of our balance for $372,000, or just 250,000 of that?
The, the first. We paid 372. That 372, 040 is actually made up of three different claims.
Aha, that's what I was trying to get to.
Yeah, that's an aggregate for the year, right?
They're not individual...
Yeah. So like, in 2023, there might have been, there might have been four claims above 250.
Okay.
We played, and so we paid about a million.
Okay, so got it.
They're by claim type, not by claim.
Got it, got it. Clarified all of that for me.
It spanned over a couple of years, so...
Right, so we only had a few that went over. Yeah, got it, okay. How many pending litigations do we have?
Pending tort claims or pending actual lawsuits? Pending tort claims, probably 30. Open lawsuits, maybe eight.
Is that consistent from these other years? So in 2023, with the million dollars that we paid out, do we have about 30 going that year, too, or...?
I would say, as you can see with the numbers, 23 and 24, definitely larger years than 22. 21 was a little bit larger than 22. But 23 and 24 are larger years in comparison to prior years.
We'd have to probably dig in and get that specific.
Yeah. I would have provided more detailed claims, but a lot of these are pending litigations currently. A lot of these claims are open right now, so we can't talk about them in an open public meeting.
But previous to 2022, so thinking back for a historical trend, so like in 2018, 19, you know, just off the top of your head, you know, most of those previous years were all more in, coming in around 273. So that's kind of what I'm trying to understand, is how much we're repaying those previous years, and has it jumped in 2023 to this bigger amount?
I didn't go back that far. I have to look that up to get more detailed information.
It's been, I mean, I think it's...
10%.
Yeah.
I don't know, I wouldn't say it jumped every year. I think year to year, you'd see fluctuation.
Like in 2023, that 400...
In, in claims that we pay.
Oh, I see, in, in the insurance rate.
Insurance jumps every year.
I was like, insurance, I was like, I've never seen a code table.
In terms of what this, this bottom line would look like, going back, you know, previous, I think you'd see...
These are just claims. Premiums is separate, so that, those numbers aren't...
And just real quick to further clarification, when you say tort claims versus lawsuits, that's because the law requires a tort claim to be, you have to file a claim in a certain way before you're allowed to proceed to file a lawsuit?
Correct.
So we have some that are, it sounds like 22 of them, or, or more, in a preliminary phase of, they may become lawsuits.
Correct.
They may, they, I don't know how they get resolved. Do some of them just get resolved before they become lawsuits?
Correct. Some, maybe a fence claim, or a mailbox, or a pothole is a tort claim. They file a claim for damages against the county.
So, so you're talking about things all the way down to, like, 500 bucks for my mailbox?
Yep.
So, okay, that's, okay. So we're not all talking about 30 multimillion-dollar tort claims. Okay. That's important to know, in my head. Go ahead.
So, just, I think I keep saying the same thing over and over, maybe in different ways. There, the, the, the claim that was just settled, there will be a deductible of 250,000 that the county writes a check for, that will come out of the risk fund, and that'll knock that 4.5 million down to 4.25 million, or 4,200. And then that cost is just, you know, theoretically dispersed amongst all departments throughout the county, and it will affect the internal rates that go into the risk fund, or how they're assessed for rates for the risk fund. So it comes out of the general fund. So people are saying, well, you know, that doesn't come out of the general fund, that comes out of the risk fund. That's not exactly true. It does come out of the general fund and various other funds, and it does affect all of the different departments when we make a payment like that.
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions on the risk fund issue?
Well, I, I'm gonna, sorry about this, but I, my brain, I have a big financial background, so I, the questions that I was asking of this information, I wasn't able to get from this information. And so I just want to ask if we can get a 10-year trend of expenditures. So I'm just going to say it like that, expenditures, meaning how much do we actually pay out, like, if we wrote a check for the total amount, will that be for each year? And next to it, the number of claims by type? And then is there any documentation that I could read, because I'm geeky like this, that, about how our rates are rebased every so often? Or how those rates are determined by the risk pool fund? Like, is there, like, you know, here are the ways that they, what they look at to determine how they're going to increase our...
There's the risk fund, and then there's the risk pool, and I think...
Whoever our insurance is.
Yeah. Commissioner, what we could do is meet offline, and we can talk through what your questions are, so we can kind of figure out how to answer them as best as possible.
Okay, well, that's all I really wanted, is just the data. And then, you know, something that says how we set our, how we, how those rates are set every year. I don't really need any bigger conversation.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
You mean the premiums from the risk pool, how those are calculated, or how we set rates internally to all departments and offices?
Both.
Okay.
Just, just out of curiosity. I'll help you. Okay.
Okay, those are the questions on that. Okay, there was the, we deferred the question about Commissioner Claus's question about the EA process. Is that something that you want to delay to get this additional information, or are you willing to do that?
I don't need to delay it, no.
Okay, so let's just segue to that issue. And Commissioner Claus, can you restate what your kind of request or question was?
Yeah, definitely. Thank you. So I had, I brought up the spreadsheet that Maria drafted up as far as a proposal for the hiring process for my next EA. And yesterday, I mentioned that I thought it was a really good proposal, and I appreciate her time that she put into developing that. And I was wondering if the board is comfortable with moving forward on directing staff to go ahead and post that job for the two-week period that was proposed in Maria's draft.
Commissioner Fornier?
I'll just say that, just based on information, I'm not comfortable with moving forward with posting an EA position. I believe that just, based on the information, Commissioner Claus should absorb this under her budget, the cost that, the 250 cost. That would be the cost of what we had to pay out. So for me, my proposal would be for Commissioner Claus to absorb that under her EA budget.
Commissioner Fornier, so I'm, I'm interested in that proposal and, and talking about that. I, for, for me, I really want, you know, like, there was, there was, there were multiple components to moving forward. You know, financial stuff aside, I think that that needs space to be talked about. But it wasn't just set up a hiring process. There was also discussion of training. There was also, there was talk about working with the administration to set up a series of classes where we could ensure that we've got, you know, that Commissioner Claus has gone through the steps to make sure that there was a, you know, a better level of awareness when it comes to supervising. So like, I'd, I'd like to know how much of that has been done before I ever talked about posting a job, because it was a if-then kind of thing. Also, you know, the financial thing, I would be, I would want to square that away as well.
Um, looking to me, I'm just looking at some information online. So I would say that, um, so Commissioner Claus did provide us with a list of trainings that she was going to attend. Did you attend the training on last Thursday?
Yes.
The first supervisor training that was on the list.
Let's see. I believe so, but let me, because there were so many trainings, let me just double-check. If it was on the list, I did attend it. Yes, the one on the 16th, I attended. And that was the risk pool training on harassment, discrimination, and retaliation prevention for supervisors. And I also got my account up and running through the risk pool, so I was able to begin the first management and supervisory class, the on-demand class, which I'm about 50% of the way done with. And that class is awesome. I'm learning a lot through that. And it's not just a series of videos, it's activities, it's a workbook, it's all kinds of things, so it's pretty interactive. And there's a 101 and a 201. So right now, I'm about halfway done with the first series.
Okay. And then I see on here that, I was just looking at what you had sent us.
So, so what we had brought up was doing a series of classes that made sense, that was vetted through HR and the county manager. And like, that's, if that's done, then, you know, like, it doesn't sound like it's done, but once that's done, I would say, that's when you, I would be comfortable having a discussion about posting a job. That's financial implications aside. That's, I think that's a sidebar conversation that could result in a totally different...
I believe commissioners, our HR director, I don't know if she copied the board or just sent it to you and I, but sent, if the board wasn't copied, I can make sure all of you receive a copy, but sent a list of trainings that was based on the commissioner's suggestion that HR come up with a list of trainings. That was sent also to Commissioner Claus, but just like yesterday, I think.
So that email that the county manager is referring to was in response to an email that I sent to Maria, reaching out to, to let her know that I'm seeking opportunities. I let her know which opportunities I had already looked into. And I also let her know that this was a top priority for me, and I'm willing to clear my schedule or travel to nearby counties, if that's what it takes to get some of these trainings completed. So we did have that conversation as a board, but after that conversation, I took the initiative to reach out to Maria on my own immediately before, you know, so that I could get the ball rolling on this as soon as possible. As far as trainings being vetted through the county manager and HR, I'm reaching out to HR, I'm reaching out to the county manager to request information on any trainings that they can find and provide for me. I feel as though any oversight, as I think it was stated, or I can't remember what your words were exactly, Commissioner Fornier, but...
I think it's just vetting.
Yeah.
Just, the, the theory was that, you know, you don't, you know, somebody like, that is, well, accused of something, doesn't get to decide their own, you know, recourse for making things whole, you know, like, it, in my mind, it gives you protection when you ask HR what their recommendation is. It's, there's a little more legitimacy than if you just kind of make it up on your own.
Well, these trainings were sent to everyone from HR.
Sure.
So they weren't just trainings that I pulled out of thin air or found on my own. These were, these are Washington County risk pool trainings that were sent to all staff by HR, and then flagged for me by another commissioner who, who thought that they looked good. So, and I...
Can I ask how many hours you think you've put into the trainings that you've done so far?
Uh, let's see, the one on Thursday was, um... Uh, let's see, the one on Thursday was, um, two and a half hours. And then over the weekend, I spent about three hours, three additional hours on the on-demand training. And each of those on-demand trainings, the one-on-one and two-on-one, are about five to six hours each, um, depending on your pace, because there's a workbook and stuff included. So.
So that's a starting point. That's not an end point where I, you know, like, an end point is when you say, in my mind, is when you say, all right, now I'd like to talk about posting a position.
To that point, I'm glad you brought that up again, because I meant to respond to that when you said it the first time. I don't think there really is an end point. I think that this is an ongoing process, and I'm always gonna be taking opportunities to learn more. Um, so it's not something that I think has like a finish line necessarily. I think it's something that needs to be an ongoing process.
That's why in my mind, you ask HR, say, hey, at what point, ha, ha, you know, is it, is it sixteen hours? Is it twenty hours? Is it forty hours? Uh, and let them say what is sufficient, or make a recommendation instead of, you know, it, 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 it takes it all off of you, right? But.
I have a, yeah.
I just wanna say one thing and then.
Recommendation.
And I'll vote in Commissioner Grant. I mean, uh, I'm not, I don't agree with the financial, you know, I don't agree that, the, the proposal to have this reimbursed through EA, see, cost savings would basically eat up the rest of Commissioner Klaus's term. It's hurting the county to have a Commissioner without proper support. So we're just, we're just adding on to what's already been a bad situation. I haven't seen any other claims.
Brought on by her own personal actions.
Yeah, you know what, Commissioner, um, you know, there's tort claims where, you know, I've never seen a proposal that, oh, Sheriff really acted out of bounds there.
Well, then maybe we need to change the policy. Then let's just change the policy then.
So we basically debit all the different budgets so that they get, so the county gets reimbursed.
You know, is it hurting the county to not have the position filled? Or is it hurting the county to continue, uh, to have a liability that's gonna result in more claims? And the only way to mitigate that is through ensuring the training.
So if, if I could finish my point, because I've been interrupted now twice, I do not agree with your approach, Commissioner Mihia. Your approach, Commissioner Fornier, is, I, I'm interested in kind of thinking about the trainings and at what point, you know, I, I don't think it's, I, I kind of agree with Commissioner Klaus. There's never gonna be an end point, I think, in some people's minds, um, because they're so upset about what happened to begin with. But, um, I definitely am willing to consider the, you know, the, the proper point. And it's just my, me speaking from my vote on this particular topic in terms of trainings that get completed, that show, you know, the, the right response by Commissioner Klaus, by the county, the safeguards that we need. So that's something I'm, I'm, I'm still thinking about, and I'm listening to, to the points that you're making about the trainings and trying to hear from Commissioner Klaus, what she's in the middle of, and what's left, and what's the timeline on that. But I feel pretty strongly that there needs to be an aggressive timeline, because this has gone on for months and months and months. And I believe it is hurting us collectively, um, as we try to build a new team with a new Commissioner, with a new county manager. So I, if, if we're gonna delay this for an additional period of time, I really wanna be clear about what that period of time is and where the end point, so to speak, is. And I'm going to Commissioner Grant, she's next in line, and then I'll vote in Commissioner Mihia.
Right. So I, I, here's where, um, I, I wanna just say, uh, I did receive and looked at, number one, the training plan that was sent from Commissioner Klaus. Um, I would like to see the ones added in that, the hu, that you reached out, um, to HR. And so I'd like you to put together this whole thing as one comprehensive training plan if possible. So a list of all, so it's like, um, you know, Commissioner Klaus's training plan. I would suggest so that we can move forward and, um, that, uh, we, I would agree with Commissioner, um, Fornier that, that, um, I wanna, I also agree that we need to see those start to get done, that those trainings actually have to be, starting to be completed. However, um, I know that it takes a period of time for us to post a position, uh, um, in following the, what was suggested as far as our training, um, you know, uh, with our interview panels and things like that. That's gonna take five weeks. You know, it's gonna be up to like six weeks. So here's what I like to propose would be that Commissioner Klaus puts together a full training plan, and it's presented to all of us. That she continues to complete those trainings, which according to what I'm seeing right here, the last training on her list is, um, February twenty-sixth. So it looks like she'll be attending trainings on the twenty-seventh, the tenth, the twenty-fourth, the twenty-fifth, and on the twenty-sixth.
Tomorrow, there's one as well.
And that, plus whatever the other HR ones that she, that we will add in, that she's gonna add into that. And in the meantime, if we, um, I would suggest like maybe next week, which is almost to February, that we actually begin to work with HR to post the position. We set up a timeline for the hiring, and that, that would get us to March by the time the position's actually hired and would start, Emily would then have had a chance to complete all the trainings. Plus, for Commissioner Mihia, that would be two months of savings, which would be around, when we think about FTEs or vacancy savings, that would be around, you know, um, not quite two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, but it would be a vacancy savings that we could put on the books that says, you know, this was, and, and so we wouldn't have a person in, in that position until March. So that would be my suggestion. Training plans, start recruiting, but do not offer the position open until March, and use those vacancy savings to help cover some of the offset.
Thank you. Commissioner Fornier, and then Commissioner Klaus. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Mihia, sorry.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Commissioner Grant, for that suggestion. I, for me, on, uh, just a financial standpoint, I'm not comfortable. I, I am not comfortable with, um, our personal actions reflecting and impacting our budget or our budgetary situation. So for me, it's, the training aside, I, I will not get into the training piece, because I, um, have the mindset that in a way, it's, you know, that's up to Commissioner Klaus. It's up to each individual Commissioner to be up in their training, to know how to supervise employees. And there were, now two, I, I heard that the first aide is looking for an attorney, right? So that's a potential lawsuit that we might have also coming, or another claim. And so for me, I, at this point, I'm not willing to give it a third time. I'm just not there and, uh, and keep getting this financial impact. Um, and so for me, I, I'm just not there. I'm, I asked the county manager to withdraw my office from any kind of, um, interviewing, because we are just removing ourselves from, from that situation. Um, in case there is another, um, lawsuit coming down, um, we are just not going to be, neither me or my aide are going to be involved in that process.
Commissioner Fornier?
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm not okay with doing things concurrently, because as we've all learned in this scenario, there is no accountability that, that can be, you know, held on another Commissioner. And that is, that is, you know, there, there's nothing to say that as soon as we okay the hiring of that, of, of that position, everything's out the window. There, there is no recourse there. And I'm, I'm not okay with, uh, you know, job offers being made, or anything being made to, uh, some other outside party that could then be put into a weird situation that we haven't made sure their safeguards put on. So for me, if there is any chance of moving forward, it's an if-then scenario, and only an if-then scenario. And it, it's upon, you know, Commissioner Klaus, you know, the expediency with which, you know, she completes the, you know, the, the tasks to ensure that we've got the safeguards in place. So, you know, it's, it's not up to the rest of us to rush and, and, you know, haphazardly, you know, prop things back up. It's, it, in my mind, it's gotta be an if-then thing, and it's still an if thing, you know, like, part of, uh, you know, going through training is also like, you know, learning, showing, you know, that, you know, that there's some self-awareness that has been cued in, in, uh, in, in the course of, you know, learning. You know, that, you've, you've gotta have some space for that, because I, I have to believe in the training and in the learning opportunity, and it being real for me to be okay with, uh, bringing another person online. And that, there, there isn't space to do that in five hours, or to do that concurrently.
And that's, that's really the heart of my issue, is, I mean, I understand why, what you're saying is logical, but from a systemic point of view, like, that's why I understand Commissioner Klaus saying that it's not gonna be an end point. Those are subjective. When, when Commissioner Fornier is satisfied is, is not a standard that we can really.
That's why it can't be up to me, just like it shouldn't be up to Commissioner Klaus or Commissioner Grant. That's why I'm saying, touch out to our HR professionals and, you know, get their advice. And maybe, you know, so it's not an arbitrary thing, it's something where someone outside of this room has said, yes, after thirty-two point seven hours and you've received training on X, Y, Z, uh, you know, that, that, that's, that should be sufficient for these reasons. You know, like, it's gotta be something, at least pretend to be, you know, something you gotta believe in is somewhat objective.
Commissioner Klaus, I, I understand.
Um, well, Commissioner Grant, if you wanna go first, because I might.
I was gonna say, I mean, I, listening to, you know, Commissioner Fornier, it's like, I can't get behind that. I mean, I'll just say like what, what you're saying, Wayne, of, you know, that if you're, if it would help, um, I mean, I think it does, you know, if, if we were to go to HR and you were to work with HR to create what I would call an act, a corrective action plan, right? Work for, um, you know, for what had happened, so HR works with you to put together all these trainings in a nice little list or something like that, if that would help us move forward. You know, I can get behind that, and we pause until, you know, um, you know, I'm also okay with thinking about not, um, putting the thing out until March, um, you know, or until you get through a few of these trainings. I mean, I'm, I'm also, um, I just want there to be a plan, and I want there to be a path forward. Um, and I want us to be able to all see that you are actually taking those actions. I mean, you know, we talked way back in October about taking trainings, and you could have hired, you know, by now, if those trainings would have been done in November and December. And, and so we waited, and so kind of that wait, that pause in giving you a chance to kind of be taking the trainings and actually proving to everyone that, you know, that you're learning and you're doing all those things, that to me does feel like, um, a possible way forward. Um, and so if that's what would make other people feel good, I'm okay to get behind that. But I want us to be able to say, here are the things that need to have to happen, and then here's when we're going to, to actually move forward with hiring. Um, it can't just be undef, indefinite forever, you know? Thoughts?
So, yeah, I mean, that, so I guess I'm, in light of that comment and Commissioner Fornier's comment, could I look to the county manager? I mean, I don't, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Klaus, and then I'll ask a question.
Um, okay, so there are a couple of points I wanted to touch on. So the trainings that, the training list that I sent, the last one is towards the end of February, but that's just because registration for trainings in March doesn't open until the beginning of February. And I put that in my email to the, to the EA, so that hopefully that information could be sent to the board, since I can't email everybody. Um, but there are some trainings in March that I had on my list, I think I included on my list. Um, and I said, the reason I'm not registered for this yet is because it doesn't open until like February third for a couple of them. And I have a calendar, you know, notification on the third to remember to register for those. Um, let's see, what else? Uh, one, the, to the point about showing, you know, proving that I'm learning something from these trainings. I don't really know how to show that without, like, being in a situation where I can show it. I mean, how, how do I show that I know how to supervise an EA if I don't have an EA? Um, so that was one question I had. And then, um, there are, you know, there's, I don't know, that I wanna get into it, especially in a public session, but there are pending tort claims that we've just learned about. Um, and so I just have a little bit of concern with the point that, um, Commissioner Fornier is making as far as like who to be accountable to. Um, so I don't, like I said, I don't wanna get into that right now in a public session, but, um, I just have some concerns about that.
County manager, I'm, we don't have HR here, but I'm just, do you have a sense of whether or not, I mean, it, it sounds like there's some desire from two, potentially three, potentially four board members for sort of a more prescriptive, like, program, so to speak, that gives Commissioner Klaus an, an end point or a goal, or the, 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 the board a benchmark? Versus just, as she said, it's hard for her to prove something that, you know, hasn't been sort of, so, do you have a sense of whether that's possible? Or if, if Maria were sitting here, is she, would, is that something that's difficult from some HR standpoint?
No, I don't believe it's difficult. Um, Maria, um, based on the last conversation, was trying to be very respectful, because Commissioner Klaus's comments were that she didn't really think the county manager or the HR should have any, any say in that. But at the request of other Commissioners, she was already working on a list. And so when, um, I was made aware of the, of the email to the EAs, because I don't think I was included on that email, about what she put together, um, uh, we sent it over to Maria, and so she, she just put something together, not wanting to overstep her bounds, but if the board were to, to direct me to work with HR to come up with, as Commissioner Grant said, uh, kind of the terminology would be like corrective action plan. I've heard that, um, term before. We could do that and, and then bring it back to the board, based on what we believe are some core competencies and, and trainings that need to be as a baseline for, um, the next step for board consideration, just to help, um, some of the dynamics and, and awarenesses that we have in this situation.
I'm okay with that, but, you know, for me, just for me, I, you know, I would, you know, if some appropriate training's only available in September or something, that's, it's not reasonable. I mean, it has to be a reasonable time. If I were Commissioner Klaus, and she said it already, but if I were her, I would set aside everything I'm doing, and if I had to fly to California for something, or if I had to go to British Columbia for something.
Sure.
To, I mean, this, this would be the.
E D, maybe.
Whatever, I mean, but whatever, like, however quickly I could sort of acquire these skills, and that they don't happen in a snap, it takes work, so I get that. But it's also something where, you know, she's trying to do a job. So, you know, as long as there's a, as long as there was a reasonable timeframe on top of what you're describing, then I think I could probably be okay with that.
For me, there has to be like independent verification.
Yeah, that sounds.
Another layer that, having HR, like, is, then we're not like, well, Emily, did you really go? She, you know, and then you have to, you shouldn't be in here having to show certifications and, you know, like, just let them vet it, let them.
Track it in TC Connect too, because then that, you know, that's, you can put trainings that you've taken into TC Connect, and then it shows that here's your HR training plan, and then we've shown the county that these are completed.
Commissioner Klaus, good.
Um, oh geez, I don't even know where to start. So, um, as far as showing certifications, I'm genuine, I'm, I'm fine with that, because I want to show that I've taken these trainings. I already have a certificate for the first one. Um, you know, I, I have another one tomorrow. You get your certificate right when they're done. In the email that I sent out, um, I mentioned that I'd be happy to provide a log of the trainings I'm taking and either distribute it occasionally, whenever Commissioners feel like, you know, however, whatever frequency people feel like they need to see that, or just keeping that log in a place that's accessible, so that people can verify whenever they wanna verify it. Um, and then with all due respect, as far as a corrective action plan, um, decided by the county manager and HR or whoever, um, and a baseline for trainings that they feel need to be taken, there were a lot of allegations that were made that were not substantiated. And I'm fine with taking trainings related to the allegations that were not substantiated, um, which is why I took one on, you know, preventing harassment, discrimination, and retaliation, even though those things were alleged, but they were not true, and they were not substantiated. So, um, coming up with like a baseline of skills that, that somebody else feels I need to take, that address the situation, I would ask that if we are gonna go that route, we take into consideration that, um, if we're gonna be addressing every single thing that was alleged, which I'm doing on my own anyways, because accountability is an individual process that, yeah, can be verified by others, but if I'm not, but if I'm not serious about taking accountability, and I'm just getting that, you know, baseline set by extrinsic factors like someone else's opinion, rather than, you know, the internal desire to improve and learn and get better, then that's not, you know.
Like it or not, you are subject to other people's opinions, and that's what this comes down to. And your idea of accountability may not look like another person's idea of accountability. And part of some of the, you know, heartache here is kind of the lack of self-awareness of, and kind of the, you know, the lack of, uh, understanding of, you know, of some of the licentious conduct. And like, you, you gotta, you know, if you wanna move on, you gotta remove yourself from that, and you've got to let somebody else like vet that. You don't, you know, like, if you wanna just, if you wanna argue back and forth about accountability and what you did and didn't do, you know, you, at some point, you have to just take ownership, move on. Uh, maybe there's people out there that think you did something you didn't, maybe there's, you know, people that. Uh, maybe there's people out there that think you did something you didn't, maybe there's, you know, people that are, are on the other side, whatever. You just gotta move forward and this is how you move forward. You know, like, and if you wanna argue about whether or not training on X Y Z is appropriate or not, then that's just gonna slow things down.
Well, I'm not arguing, so.
That's kinda what you're doing, well, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be held accountable for this cuz I don't think I did this wrong. Like, we're, are we, we need to, we need to get past that.
We had an independent third-party investigation that determined-
Do you really wanna go down this rabbit hole?
I'm not saying that I didn't do something wrong, I'm saying that these was, these allegations were not substantiated. If you, if, we have had leadership, some of-
I don't wanna go down this rabbit hole.
This is not a good, this is not a good path.
Yeah, and I would recommend that we not have this.
You wanna move forward or you wanna just argue about those things?
You're getting me ready to go down that rabbit hole, I don't wanna go down that rabbit hole.
Yeah, so I, I'm just gonna interrupt there, so, I mean, can I think about, like, you know, how do we move forward, right? You know, I think about the, you know, we, we have heard, um, you know, uh, that from a staff, um, you know, that, that it is hard for, I, my expectation for myself as a commissioner would be that I, um, am held to the same standards as what my staff that work here at Thurston County would have to be held to, and if this was, um, a case going on within our staff and our human resources manager was involved and we came back and said, here are, here's what happened and here's our corrective action plan. Here are the steps we'd like you to take as staff in order for us to guarantee the risk to our county, the risk to the future staff. Like, I mean, we would say, here it is, you need to do these things before we move forward. That's what would happen for a staff member. So for me to say to you, you know, to you guys that I feel like if, if we've heard from staff that, that they feel like we should be held to the same, same standards they are, then we should maybe follow the same rules that they would have to follow and that seems reasonable to me before we move forward with, with hiring. Yeah.
Um, thank you, Commissioner Van, um, for that perspective, I, I really respect that you're, you feel comfortable sharing your perspective because that's helpful for me in understanding how to move forward in the best way. Um, when you, you said, you know, if HR were involved in other staff issues, we would wanna see the same thing. And I agree with that, but, and not, most of the problems that occur of this nature don't come to this level. This has been a very public situation, which is, you know, that's fine, we're elected officials and we're gonna, you know, a lot of our situations, personal or professional, are gonna be aired in the public setting, um, and I understand that, so, no qualms there, but there, there are several staff issues that are similar that don't come to this level. And even when they do come to this level and the board is made aware of issues that staff have on retaliation, harassment, bullying, discrimination, those, we don't actually have ongoing conversations about those. We hear the complaints and then it stops, and there are a number of complaints that I've heard once about through an email from staff, from a staff member where HR is included or the county manager's included, it comes to the full board and then we never hear about it again and we don't know what's happening with those.
That's not, that's, that isn't, you, you are a legislative body that sets policy. We, and, and the only time that we're gonna deal with something is when we're deciding, like, the financial applica- implications. Those are HR, county manager issues and I, I wouldn't, I've been in all the same meet, more meetings, but I, I would say that's not true. I, there has not been a, 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 you know, a line of people out the door filing complaints. You know, some, that happens in the, in any organization and we have process, uh, the issue, the issue, and again, this is like, uh, seems like a lack of kind of self-awareness kind of thing. The issue is, your issue's public cuz you're a public official.
That's what I just said.
And that's where things, this is where things end up, because you're not subject to HR.
So, I'm not sure I understand the whole, like, I really don't understand your point, Commissioner Klaus. I don't understand where we're going with this particular, um, topic, so let's just, like-
And I, I was just, let me just-
Try to get to a-
Add one more thing in there just as a response to that, cuz I, I do, and I think that the most important thing here is that we don't, we're not, we're not, we're asking, you're asking for us to take action to hire an EA, that's the thing at hand. So, uh, we, you know, outside of this, you know, other things like what you were just talking about can be talked about and dealt with, but, but you're asking for what's gonna happen in your situation. And when it comes to, like, how I, you know, um, if, if you want, um, well, the only behaviors we can change are our own, and so, I mean, that's all I, all, my only way I can say. The only person that I can influence, the only thing outside of my world that I can influence is my own actions. So if I want someone to, um, let me hire someone, I would take all the trainings and do all the things and show that I'm taking the actions and I'm making the effort to change my own behavior. That's the only thing we can do here and, um, and so that's all I, like, for me, it's, I need to be able to see that. And, um, and so, one down, ten to go, you know, sort of a thing, um, cuz again, you know, I will just say, we, you and I have, have talked about this and, and I would agree with Ty that we had this conversation too, that you could go to D, DSHS, you could work with HR, you could go to LNI. There are trainings going on, um, at a level all over this county all of the time and you could go every day from now till, for thirty days straight. And then, and if that would have happened already, we might have already been hiring an EA, but it hasn't. And so, until we see the action and results of the actions, then we move forward with an EA, that's how I feel. Um, so, so, I mean, yeah, I, I think HR should make an action plan. I think that you should follow that and that we should then come back and, um, and revisit putting, uh, hiring out, you know, after some of that's done.
And HR's action plan would be brought to you, it's not like we're arbitrarily coming up with this. We bring it for, for the board's consideration review, um, which it would include Commissioner Klaus, so we're not-
I'll agree with anything HR just lays out as long as it's got a reasonable timeframe to sit with it. That's my only concern, because I think, you know, it's, it's totally, it's totally natural to focus on one element, but the other element is the work that the county needs to do and what Commissioner needs to be, I mean, I, I can personally tell you, if I hadn't had an executive for, since, for like nine months, I probably would be resigning because this job would swallow me up whole, it's almost swallowing me up whole right now. Um, so I just wanna balance, you know, the, the various things that we're trying to balance that are important to the board and to the county and the, and the taxpayers and the constituents in terms of being responsible, getting accountability, getting, you know, county-protected, but also getting the board working, so, I, I guess, so, what, what's, what's a good next step, county manager? Like, to have a, a proposal sent to the board regarding what the action plan would look like with timeframes?
Yeah, give us a, a few days to put that together, HR. Again, so, but they've already been thinking about this since the first meeting, but they took a, a more softer approach, um, based on the comments that were made last meeting, I think if the board were direct, uh, majority of the board direct, uh, uh, county manager work with HR, develop a action plan that includes trainings that are timely, um, and that have a start and kind of end timeframe, we will get that together in several days.
Is that appropriate?
I'll make a motion to direct county manager to work with HR to develop a corrective action plan focused on supervising, uh, for Commissioner Klaus, to be done in a timely manner, uh, and with the, with the goal of, once that is completed, um, discussing an EA.
That's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
So, motion, second, um, discussion on that motion. So, I-
Okay, yeah, yeah, I just, sorry, I'm just thinking, you know, you gotta give me a minute to think about what-
I think if then is very important, like, you ma- mentioned earlier was, you know, hey, if it was you, you'd have done all these classes already and you would have showed up ready, you would have showed up saying, hey, I've already taken corrective action. And, and, I mean, there's gotta be, there's gotta be some, there's gotta be something done, but the fact that nothing, well, five hours has been done, it doesn't, it doesn't give me the confidence to say, yeah, let's concurrently post that EA position.
My, I, I, my hesitation, I, I'm, I'm okay with that part of the motion you just described. My only hesitation is, is to say, now we discuss, because then there could be a whole new set of, of, of goals and hoops to jump through.
Well, there could be a whole bunch of trips and falls between now and then too.
There could be.
That's, that's the re, you know, like-
How about we just revisit, you know, we just say, we, we then, um, once the EA is, the, well, I don't even know if it's that, but-
In my mind, there has to be the prescribed course of action.
Right.
Once that's completed, then we reevaluate the situation and, I mean, the-
It comes back to the board for a vote if we move forward on, on EA. I, and I will say that, you know, I have offered, again, I'm gonna reemphasize that, I have offered to share my, um, I'm questioning that now cuz this, this job has got me sucked in, but, um, that, you know, I'm offering hours of my admin EA in the meantime while you get this done for you to use and, you know, for you to use some of her time so she can help you if you're feeling overwhelmed. So please take advantage of that and, um, you know, in the meantime though, I would agree, okay, so, there's a motion on the table.
And just, we've also offered Amy to provide support, times, to schedule meetings and other things, um, as needed.
Okay, um, any other discussion on this motion? I'll call for the vote, um, I guess, um, I'll just clarify, I'm gonna vote against the motion mainly because of my concern about the, the, the squishiness of timeline and, and its lack of certainty, I, the approach that's representing the motion I could get on board with, but I just wanna say that, so, all in favor, say aye.
I have one more, uh, in light of what you, your comment, is there a way that we can amend the motion to have more solid deadlines? Would that be a way that you feel like you could get on board with it? Because I agree with that, that the arbitrary deadlines have caused delays that don't, that are not fully understood, which is, you know?
To answer that, I wanna see the proposal that I may be okay with, it may be laid out in a way that I'm comfortable with, so I will, I will not make an amendment to that motion until I see in a couple of days what the-
So, can we table it, can we table that, this motion to next week?
We need to give clear direction, yeah, we need to give clear direction to the county manager.
Okay, oh, that, that's fine.
And the motion has said, develop, develop a corrective action plan.
And leave it there.
I would think that that, no, I'm not gonna change my motion cuz I don't, I, I don't, I want it to be clear that just because that's developed doesn't mean the EA thing, it's, it, 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 we, it would come back, after he develops it, we'd come back and we would all be like, yeah, yeah, yeah. But really, I wanna, in my mind, it, it just needs to be given to HR and trust the professionals to put something together. I mean, I, they, they know they're not gonna, well, it's a six-year process and you need to have a PhD and that, that's not gonna happen, but if they come back, you know, and, and nor is it gonna come back saying, well, in, you know, one more YouTube video and you're good.
Right.
I, I trust them.
Can someone repeat what the motion was out loud?
All that Commissioner Fornia repeated, so I don't mess it up.
The motion was to direct county manager or work with HR to develop corrective action plan focused on supervisory training for Commissioner Klaus and whatever they prescribe, I, I'm, I'm trusting. With the intent that after that corrective action plan is completed, there would be another decision point in which we decide whether an EA will be hired.
So there'll be discussion after we see a, HR action plan?
There could be, uh, I mean, if I, if I, if I think it's really inappropriate, you know, then I'm, you know, what I see. Like, it's totally overboard, it's not gonna be complete for a year.
I don't think it's going to be.
I don't think it is either, which is why I'm willing to leave it for, like this for now, but I would, I would just telling you, signaling that I would then probably bring it back up for discussion and revisiting, so.
I'm sure it'll be less than I want, but more than Commissioner Klaus wants, it'll be, that's the way it works. It'll be somewhere in there and if nobody's happy with it, then it's probably the right thing.
Okay.
So I'll call for the vote on Commissioner Vice-Tor Fornia's motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
I'm abstaining.
And?
I'm abstaining as well.
Okay, so, it's two to one, twos, two, so that motion carries, I believe.
The abstains don't count as no's.
Then I'll vote nay.
And it's a hung vote.
Then I'll vote aye.
Okay, let me take that vote again, all in favor-
See, the nay vote just makes me even more worried about the whole thing.
I just wanna move, look, I need, we need to move forward, so I'm gonna say yes and-
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll say aye, but now I wanna say no because, I mean, just, that, that is not accountability. Saying, you know, taking ownership and saying, yeah, I'll move forward and I'll, I, I will trust the process, that's accountability. But saying no, like, you're just, you're-
When I justify my reason, I'm told we're not going down that path, so.
Because that's arguing about what you did or didn't do.
It's not arguing about what I didn't do, it's the fact that-
I, I don't, honestly don't think that you should be guessing at the motives of why someone takes a vote, there's a lot of different- I gave it a reason why, but I don't know why Commissioner Klaus, if she wants to answer that, she can, but I don't, I don't think that's really helpful.
Sure.
Um, so we have a three-two vote to pass, that motion carries and so county manager has that direction. We'll see that plan, if it seems out of whack to commissioners, I encourage you to, to bring it back for, for discussion, but hopefully it'll be on point and in line with the discussion that we've had, so, we can just move forward from there. Okay, thank you. Okay, then we have, uh, a space for commissioner items, um, we squeezed a few in yesterday, but we have a little more time if there's anything that somebody didn't get a chance to, to raise.
Uh, Commissioner, I mean, Chair, once commissioners are done having their items just to bring up.
Okay, we have a commissioner check-in today too, is that, so maybe we can refer, I was gonna do a couple of updates on things, but it's really more of a commissioner, uh, commissioner check-in type stuff, so, go ahead, Commissioner, uh, county manager.
Yeah, um, to Commissioner Menzur's earlier point, there is a lot going on right now and, uh, appreciate all of your engagement. What you'll notice is, maybe to, to have this conversation with, uh, the new board seated, our staff are really working hard to vet information, gather that information up as, uh, questions are, are presented in, in work sessions or meetings and then send that information out, uh, to all of you for review prior to us scheduling a time to come back and report on, report out on it. It's really helpful if you, in, in between the getting the information and the time setting, if you have more questions, let us know because part of what trying to create is an environment where staff are really confident when they come to the table. It's not to say that a discussion isn't gonna go different directions, but it does allow them and afford them, if we have questions in advance, if you want more research, for them to do the research so that by the time they come, they can engage and really answer your questions. Uh, have to remember that this is being filmed on YouTube and so there's a sensitivity that nobody, a content expert, subject matter expert, you'll, you'll kinda understand this, Commissioner Grant, um, uh, no, no subject matter expert likes to say, I don't know, but we really encourage them to say, I don't know, if they don't know because oftentimes, uh, a comment that's not fully researched gets used against them or gets used against the board. They'll come to public comment, we have people bringing glasses of water and different things that, that will say things. And so what's happened is, we're trying to create an environment where staff can perform at their best and, and we know we're sending a lot of information out, so if it's ever too much or you need us to slow down pacing on that, um, we're happy to do that to make sure people have time to, to absorb information, we're happy to have off, uh, side meetings to bring you up to speed because some of this, uh, content, maybe I'm sensitive, uh, only been here nine months, I can relate, especially to a new commissioner, um, some of these topics are pretty deep and they have a lot of history as commissioners who have been here a while will bring me into the loop and say, well, Leonard, there's like a, here's a stack of papers you should read, and I always find that extremely helpful. So, our desire is to be of the best service to you, we believe, we do that the best when we can give you all the information at the same time and give you a chance to absorb and, and review it. But I just wanted, uh, to note that I understand that as we're going down that path, there's, you're, you're starting to see a generation of more work, um, and more information coming your way, and so, we hope that it's helpful. Uh, we're open to refine it, we're trying to keep the information, that balance between comprehensive, but also, um, effective and efficient. Uh, and so it's not, uh, too much and not too little, the gold, kind of a Goldilocks approach. And so, I will say though, that as we walk through, uh, I'm very, um, encouraged and our staff are motivated by how you commissioners have been responding. You, some of you have thanked staff for putting write-ups together, that has gone a long way because it is extra work on their part. But what we're seeing is, when they come to meetings, they're more prepared, they're looking a little bit calmer, conversations aren't going askew, and then we're, we're also seeing accomplishing huge things like, uh, we had Josh, Bruce, Rick, uh, um, and Tom bring forward that resolution, bring forward the, the press release, uh, which is the, the public symbol of all the work that they did with the stakeholders and it was wonderful to see how positive the stakeholders were.
That was nice.
And, and that was a good, starting back on summer recess, we called that, um, that special task force or subcommittee?
Subcommittee.
Subcommittee. And so, um, I'm looking forward to our time, um, connecting this year and planning sessions where we can talk about process and what's working and what's not, because, um, our, our staff really take a lot of pride and even joy in being of service to you and helping you be prepared, as prepared as you need to be. But we know that with the new board, there's a lot of things we wanna look at differently. We wanna get to the bottom of things by information so that we can- We wanna get to the bottom of things by information so that we can be more informed. We have a budget process that we want to redevelop. And your partnership in that is, is, um, really appreciated. Just know that we wanna be flexible and we wanna customize our approach so that it really meets your needs. And balancing the fact that we have a small but mighty team, and like I said, when I first got here in 2024, I really do believe in government, staff can do anything they put their minds to. They just can't do everything all at once because what happens is it just becomes a capacity issue. And so we're balancing that. I really feel like Thurston County is in a process of getting mobilized and moving forward. Uh, the, the positive comments I've received about the two new assistant county managers, first, um, uh, Josh Cummings when he joined the team and how he's working with, with staff. But then even the appointment of Jennifer Walker, a lot of positive comments, people in the organization saying that's the right choice, we're excited about what she did in Public Works and the product that we see there. Um, people that haven't solicited, one person this morning just came knock down and said, I know you don't need my vote of confidence, but I'm so excited because when I worked with her in the past, it was amazing and I'm excited to see her elevate. So we're, I think Thurston County is on the move and I know that sometimes we have to have difficult conversations, but I appreciate your leadership. As demonstrated last night, we accomplished something big with having all the stakeholders in agreement to take a, to take a pause on one direction that had been baked for a while and to move forward into a new direction and all the work that's gonna entail. That's because you guys took the lead and we appreciate that. So thank you for the time to just express that.
I think one, uh, example, going back to the beginning of your comments about questions like last night's public hearing is a great example, cuz that's a really, that topic has multiple layers and it's complicated. And as Commissioner for Vice-Tor Fornier tried to, you know, tried to clarify a couple of times to, to very, uh, to various degrees of success, um, you know, it, it's, so it, it's a great ex, and I'm gonna, I'm not all, I'm not always great at, at what is being suggested, but I'm gonna make a concerted effort to sit down and write out my questions in, in an email that I can forward so that staff can be ready to kind of go through that work session prepared. I encourage all of you to do the same, I'm sure. We have a lot of the same questions, we heard a lot of the same material, but there was a lot there to kind of chew on. Some of it germinated, the topic, some of it not, but it's still.
We wanna round it up.
I wanna round it up and to understand it, even if it's kind of a little bit off topic.
Sure.
Um, so anyway, that's a good, a good chance for us to all kind of exercise this, uh, this approach that you're outlining.
Thank you, Chair.
Good night.
Yeah.
I just echo on that. So, well, and I also wanna publicly say that, thank you for, thank you for wrapping that up and I really appreciate it. You know, the big part of my learning curve here has been like, how do we get things done? You know, and, and trying to work really closely with all of you to figure out how does this work? And I'm learning, and so I wanna publicly say, I actually, in the meeting, I should have told earlier when, um, the risk, um, folks were here, that that one pager was amazing. Instead, I picked it apart. And I have a tendency, like, I'm sorry, like, and, um, but what I'm learning is, and so I'm, I'm, I'm glad that you brought this up cuz I think while you were saying that, I was able to reflect and sit, think, oh, if I had those questions, why didn't I just email them to you after I saw it the first time? And so that, that was a little, just so you guys are aware, it was a little confusing to me coming in from the outside. Because I, it's like, am I supposed to ask? How, you know, am I, cuz it comes with, it comes with this, you know, and then it's like, this is something that we're gonna be talking about and I feel like it's, like, once it comes to us in our email, then we still have the chance to respond and I didn't quite know that. So like, I, and so, um, I'm just excited. I think that, that, um, and I'm learning and, um, and I just, uh, I'm, I think you guys are all just doing an incredible job. I will emphasize again that I, I'm thinking, like, I couldn't hardly sleep last night thinking about legislative session and the fact that we're at a biennial budget and that they're setting two years' worth of funding, and so I wanna make sure that we do have, that's my commissioner item, that we, we do think clearly and, and, um, strategically about making sure we have somebody on staff advocating for dollars for us at every moment, just because this is it. And then we have two years, by the end, we, and we get to two years, we're already gonna be out of luck. So that's my only thing that I've seen that I'm, that for me that I just like, oh, yeah, what, yeah. Uh, it's gonna go fast and quick and, um, and, uh, I just wanna make sure we get all the dollars we can, so that's it. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry that, they did a great job on the risk thing, so.
First point, Commissioner, um, you know, uh, that's, the way you're thinking about it, I think is exactly right, and if you, you know, if you thought of those questions, you can, but always, I just wanna make the point, and County Manager made it too, so I know we're on the same page, that like, that's just a baseline approach. If you think of a question in a meeting, don't ever hesitate to ask that question. I mean.
We can always research it.
You, you, you always have situations where you didn't think of some, another commissioner brings something up or something occurs to you, and we have to have that latitude. So I don't want you to feel handcuffed, like, oh, I can't ask this cuz I didn't add, I could've sent this in an email. It's just a good way of approaching it and I, I appreciate that approach and I'm gonna try to do better at it, but, but you do have latitudes, Commissioner, to get the information you want and ask for it. Again, you may decide, I'm gonna ask for this right after the meeting, you know, and that's your call, but you have the latitude to ask questions. We're not trying to say that that's.
I'm not saying, so, thank you for saying that. And, um, we are excited to have you on this board from a staff standpoint because, uh, your perspectives, this is like, three, three weeks so far. Um, wonderful perspectives and identifying process and I think it's gonna be a, a good building year for all of us.
Good.
Yeah.
Other commissioner items?
Well, and I guess that, that was a question I had for you guys for process, so like, what's the difference between a commissioner check-in and a work session? Like, what should we be, what should we be fleshing to one and, and moving to the other? Cuz I, I don't know.
Check-in is really, so, so the, the foundational point of check-in is like talking about our boards and committees. Like that, you can bring other stuff into it, but like, that's kind of what it's for. It's like, here's what happened at Lot, here's what happened at JazzCon. We're, we're all out serving on our boards and we need, we all kind of need to know, like, important stuff. Sometimes we all say nothing really important and they're kind of short or they get canceled. You don't always have to give, you know, we don't need like a blow-by-blow of the Transportation Policy Board meeting if nothing of significance occurred, but it's just an opportunity for us weekly to kind of share. And it may not be even external board, it may be something, a meeting, another community meeting you attended, you know? Like last night, I attended a Tumwater School District strategic planning session and maybe I learned something really important there and I wanted to share that with you guys. I mean, that's a chance to do it. So that's it. Commissioner Items is just kind of, gets appended onto that, it's just to kind of create some space just so we have space to bring, cuz every day, something may be needed to be brought to the board and, you know, we're not supposed, we're trying to be really respectful in public meetings, act, right? So we're not running around to each other's office, violating a serial meeting, whatever. We have frequent opportunities to bring up random stuff and that's kind of, kind of what that's a catch-all, but the foundation for me is just meetings, you know, sharing our external boards and committees, that's Commissioner Check-In. The work sessions are just ran, are just topics that need, like, you know, working through. It, it could be anything, really. It could be.
Like last night, for example.
Follow-up on last night's public hearing.
Yeah, there, um, you heard, um, Assistant County Manager said, we can bring this back to a work session in anticipation that there's so many questions. There's no way we can accomplish all that in an email. So they're gonna round up the questions, we're gonna get questions from commissioners. And we're gonna come and unpackage it, give you advance notice that it's gonna happen, so if you want more information about a topic, we can get it to you or we can even meet ahead of time with content staff so that when you come, we can have a real conversation. It's normally to get a level of awareness or direction to keep moving things forward from.
A little bit deeper dive into a particular topic, like, we've had requests, I think, like, let's look at all of our IT programs, like, let's get a, so that the commissioners have a sentence, so that's gonna be an upcoming work session.
So it's kind of like work session, the question we, I mean, we're gonna hear was, what's the difference between a work session and a commissioner check-in? And so like, for me, I'm always thinking about, where do you bring information forward and where's it the most strategic and so then, and then, um, but, so that you're saying to me, I think, is what you both were saying, is that work session really is kind of like the follow-up back with the staff, the opportunity to kind of collaborate around different things that we've seen and we are following up on. And then commissioner check-in, because the question I have is, I'm always thinking like, why do we do this like fifty times, you know? I'm noticing that, like, we all went through all our boards and commissions last night at the meeting, like, this big, long thing, so. But this commissioner check-in would be kind of our time rate then to come together and be like, yeah, well, I, and this is what I, maybe, maybe I wanna have the staff look at a project to move forward on and I would come and bring that to you guys then, and that's our time to talk about like what we're seeing and what, how we wanna move things forward. Like, because that's my question, is like, I wanna be able to chat with you all about, hey, do you think this is a bad idea or a good idea?
Chatting doesn't take place at like last night, but also like, you may get, you may talk about something in commissioner items that you did. They may also wanna mention in a meeting when we've got a hundred people there.
Oh, right, those are, there's specific messaging and there's a, there's a way to do that.
The board, the Tuesday meeting, commission reports, that's really, you're speaking to the community, not to us.
And then it's us, like.
And then these sessions are more like, you want me to know something, you want Commissioner Mehe to know something, you know, it's.
Good, I have something for later.
That's really just like letting the community know that, you know, they may only see us once a week or once every two weeks. I personally like the community to know that, hey, I'm out there working for you. You know, I don't necessarily tell, tell you what happened at the Lot meeting, but I want you to know, I'm out doing this, that, and the other, so that you know where I'm touching points in the community. That's what that's about. This is a lot more substantive. I wouldn't even bring up any of my committees unless I think something is of board concern.
Okay.
And, and so for example, if, like, JazzCon is gonna implement a, a, a hike in their rates and you just got an update at your last meeting, that'd be good to come and say, I'm just putting the county on notice, because then what I will do as county manager is say, thank you, Commissioner, I'll reach out to, um, you know, staff, on a staff level to get that information. So you're, you're kind of scanning your boards and commissions, bringing items of awareness so that then we can be reactive as an organization.
Okay, so then I just, so like, I just send you an email and you'll put it on the commissioner check-in agenda?
You, you don't always have to do that.
Just come.
I think, uh, uh, if you're going to bring something for folks to review.
Yeah.
It's good to give, no one likes to be blindsided. It's good to give me a heads up cuz then I can distribute it to everyone and say, someone wants to look at this letter, uh, in detail. And it gives everyone a heads up that they're gonna know to.
Or you're gonna ask us to sign on something.
Right.
Like, there's been a couple of times where like, we've got a grant from some other community or, and we're like, hey, they want our support, and so we'll have a letter that we're looking for support with and, like.
I just wanna be able to get your input on like, before I move, I'm like, what do you think about this? I mean, that's where I'm, I wanna make sure we have space for that, so that's the time. All right.
Commissioner Check-In, yeah.
I got it. All right, cool.
Um, I'm gonna bring up Commissioner Item since we were talking about litigation this morning.
Yeah.
Um, and Commissioner Mehe and I have talked about this, like, I, I ran into a situation with a constituent where I was working with a constituent on a problem in their neighborhood and they, she, and they were at odds with the HOA and, and all this stuff. And then I find out like, three months into my working with the constituent, that there's a pending litigation and the county's involved. And that just, that kind of just triggered for me that like, we don't, you know, we don't hear, we only hear about litigation against county like in, in spurts where like there's a decision point or a dollar amount, and it's like, I kind of feel like we need to know. I mean, I, I could've messed up the litigation potentially by getting involved unknowingly. So it seems, it's always seemed a little odd to me that we don't kind of just get, and I don't need to know about a five-hundred-dollar, you know, mailbox, but I mean, you know, anything significant, it seems like maybe quarterly, we, we have a, we just get a list of, I mean, that, I don't know, I don't know how it shouldn't be framed, but it feels like the board should be a little more aware of the full breadth of major litigation against the county. In this case, I think it's a three-point-four million dollar claim and I was mucking around in the middle of it, not knowing there was a lawsuit involved. And so I, I don't think anything happened, uh, you know, I don't think anything happened that would be, but it just made me nervous cuz I could've used that to not be involved, frankly. I could've said, you know, hey, there's litigation here. It, it's not a situation that I, that I think that I, that as a commissioner, I could do anything to solve, so I've been really I'm struggling to figure out how to help the constituent to begin with, so I've wasted a lot of time, Linda's wasted a lot of time. Probably shouldn't have even been involved.
Gotcha.
So that, I mean, that's just a specific example. I think the broader question is how much should the board know about the different claims that are going and what, what the fact patterns are, just at a thumbnail sketch, so we can make sure we don't wade into dangerous waters.
I had some preliminary conversations with Risk and the attorney assigned just to get a sense of how that's moving around. And where it came from, there was a, a monthly report.
Yeah.
And I, so I believe there's a way that, that it can be accomplished. Let me touch base with Risk and John G. Heimstein.
Okay.
If you can figure out, cuz I do believe it'd be helpful. And sometimes folks, knowing that they have litigation, might try to get you involved.
Right.
Um, and so I think it's to your advantage to have that as a gauge on your dashboard just to do a reference check with some of your aides to make sure, is there anything we need to be aware of? It's a, it's a good perspective.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you know, uh, I don't know, I've seen, we've, I've seen these kinds of reports, but you know, it's like, we usually like, kind of like I talked about with the ledge report yesterday, low, medium, high, like you, there's a hundred going on, but we don't care about seventy-nine of them. We just care about three at the top or, but we still get a chance to, if I want to, look at the whole voucher report, I can, like, you know, and so you can just brief it. But I, I have the same kind of question with the random things like, that are coming in, like, um, like, if we get a, a letter that, from a constituent, um, about a property issue, or, um, how do we know that those are followed up on?
So that's where your EA's are really important. Uh, they, and, and they meet as a team to kind of like make sure that, cuz we don't, we don't wanna speak with multiple voices if, if it's not appropriate to do that, just because we don't know. Um, because constituents will, will sometimes not, they'll make it sound like they're just coming to me, but they're also seeing what Commissioner Fornier and Commissioner Mehe are gonna say and see if they can get someone interested in their issue and we're giving.
They've done six years of working on this issue and now they're looking for a new answer.
Yeah, they don't like the answer I'm giving them or whatever. I mean, so like, that's where our EA's really work hard to coordinate those and make sure that everyone, did, did everyone get this or did I just get it? Did I just get it cuz it's in my district and I can take the lead, or is this like, you know, over in Yelm and really you should, you know, and they can maybe, maybe direct you to be the lead, or let's make sure we're all saying the same thing. Sometimes we're getting like, a hundred people are angry about the thing in Tenino with, you know, sex offenders placement, and it's like, let's make sure we have messaging that, you know, we're, we're all sending out emails that don't stay across messages to each other, so.
There's a constituent, was it C, what is it called?
CRG.
What's that?
Constitu-, what is it called? Or Citizen Response Group back in the day, but constituent.
So there's like a constituent tracking.
And they keep a spreadsheet, basically, yeah, they track.
I said, I don't know that.
That's the concept.
We'll make sure, actually, Amy will make sure or the other aides can make sure Ashley gets, she hasn't already been.
Some of those issues, you'd wanna make sure that you, like, some of the solutions, you're not necessarily too close to because when we, we also hear land use issues that you may
Right.
be better off having made sure you're not
Right.
in the middle of when we get up there.
Right, right.
But, but staff attend those and Commissioner, uh, Fornier is absolutely right. Um, staff attend those and, and the director now has been attending. Really appreciate the aides' hard work of working together to round those items up. And Ashley has some thoughts about how to improve the tracking between public health, environmental services, and also Public Works. And making sure that we're all on the same page, cuz as Commissioner Menzur, uh, said, it's really important that the, the consistency of messaging is, is maintained.
That's another fun piece. It's like, I reached out to CPED and it's like, wait, your thing is at Public Works, like, so it's, or it's with environmental health, so that's another fun piece. Yeah, just on the like abstaining from things or like having, have, being removed, sometimes constituents really mean well, right? And they want you to be involved because you're their commissioner, but they don't understand or know the rule, right? And so for me, I got in, like, they started CCing me in communications with an attorney and I'm gonna have to recuse myself for that, right? Not because I responded or, but it was like, oh, right, like, you've involved me now to this level of communication where it's just me receiving ex parte communication at that because it's now being appealed.
Yeah, right.
Um, and so there's that kind of line that you kind of have to navigate through.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm just trying.
MRSC has a short course on local planning.
Yeah, I've, I've taken it.
Have you?
Yeah, 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 I took it.
One item, Chair, back to the litigation. I know that the team is sensitive about, as the item, information is shared, that it has to just remain absolutely confidential. And I know that you would all understand why, especially if it's pending litigation. So that's something that is, I've been asking questions, that staff have been, well, does this mean confidential? I said, I know, they're, they're a policy body and need, need information, so we're just gonna work that through.
Yeah, I just like to make sure that it's tracked, like, it'll be real easy, cuz I'll just see something come in and I'll be like, okay, well, someone else is dealing with that, but if we all say that, then I don't know how anything, and so it's like, oh, if there's just a list of litigation or something, I think, I'm a big tracker of everything, you guys, and so it's kind of like, I just don't wanna deal with it. I don't wanna ask sixteen people, that's a waste of time. So, yeah.
I think, but also like, this is technically public information though, if we're like,
Yeah.
if there is a pending lawsuit, right, we just can't go into Odyssey and be like, there's some county because all this is gonna appear and, and so if there's a way where at least it's just the general information that's sent out, that is public information.
I agree with you.
Um, I don't see if there is an issue, I, and if a commissioner would like further information, basically if Commissioner Menzur, you know, saw the, the name on there and was like, oh.
Name and address and kind of what, you know, like a sentence of what it is, you know? Dave Johnson alleges that sheriff, you know, roughed him up over at, um, Steamboat Island Road, okay, that. Okay, that, that's all I need to know, like, okay, if I had a call from Dave Johnson.
And like a status of red, green or red, green or yellow, like someone's working on it, yellow, somebody, this is a major issue or yeah, it's already done, you know? And then we don't even have to like, oh, done, you know, something like that. But yeah, okay, well, we'll, I'll, I'll learn more as we go.
Pending lawsuits isn't, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, although the 30 tour claims are, you know, that's a lot, but. Okay, other Commissioner Items for this morning. I understand we have a Commissioner Check-In.
Oh, I do have one more thing. And I maybe want, this is a really good example of this of like, so when we were at Steady, Joe.
DePinto?
Yes, thank you, I'm sorry Joe. But Joe DePinto mentioned that he had reached out, I think he said he sent it, he was like, I think I sent it to Ty, I think I sent it to Carolina, I don't know. But it was an MOU that he was trying to get in place and you probably have an answer right off the bat. But MOU in place so that, that Yelm could be in charge of the trail.
They want to be able to maintain.
County Manager is on, is on top of it. I've been bugging and I've.
Okay, well, I know, I'm like, because I'm like, okay.
So you can get, you can get back to Mayor DePinto and let him know, our staff have met. And thank you Commissioner Mensah and Commissioner Mihia for advancing that conversation. Staff have met and right now Public Works is getting an overview of what our next steps. We'll probably bring that back to a work session to get direction from the board now that we know what Yelm's official request is. So we're probably a couple of weeks away from that coming before you.
Okay. All right, so, so I'm going to make sure I'm following, so it's like, okay, it was forwarded to the county manager, the county manager's got it, Public Works is working on how do we replicate it and, and then we'll come back, it'll come before us and then it will be done.
We'll get direction and then we'll, once the board sets direction on how they, how they want to handle Yelm's request, which I'm sure the mayor gave you an overview, then we can start to work towards implementing that.
Okay, cool.
I reached out to their city administrator and they assigned a point person for it and Jennifer Walker.
That's in the process.
Had that initial meeting and things went really well and so we'll be ready to come back soon.
Yeah, because I read online that somewhere in the last couple of days in my learning, I, that it said right on like their trail system or something, that Yelm, we have MOUs in place. It actually said that, MOU's in place with Yelm, Lacy, whoever the other. And I thought, well, Yelm told me they didn't have one, so I'm reading it on the page. I'm like, wait a second, so maybe it happened before I even came back, but now I know, so.
We have MOU's, what they want is something a little bit different.
Okay.
And so that's what we're working through.
I see, okay.
Yeah, their staff have been really great at consolidating with one voice what their request is. And so we're, we're just working through the next steps and we'll be able to bring that back so we can give you an overview, if you choose to go that direction, how to do it.
Yeah, so the last point on that I'd make is that maybe as we move forward then we could help out like people like Joe and not having to email every single one of us, you know? I mean, when things are working, working well.
That's assuming that help hasn't been.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
There is, I don't, I'm, I've, I've been involved in the conversation too. There hasn't been a lack of.
So all three of it, all four commissioners are off running around trying to get an MOU done.
It's not that work hasn't been done on.
Yeah, yeah, that's what you said too.
And I believe he was copied on the email we sent over to the city administrator, talking about what our next steps were, but it just probably.
I'd love to be CC'd.
Yeah, the issue was instead of having a maintenance agreement, they just wanted to own it. And we're like, no, that's not how this works. We can have an MOU where you can mow it, maintain it, take care of it. That's how it works with every other jurisdiction. Well, yeah, but, and then, then they're like, yeah, but we want to own it. Well, that's not how it works. And so like, that, that's why.
Yeah, 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 so it'll be good because like as I go to meet with Yelm next week, I kind of need to know all the stuff that's happening that he might want to talk to me about. So that's, you know, it'll be, it'll be cool.
I think, meeting with the county manager and getting like just a full round done because there is so much history and they, they've had different point persons contacted.